All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the City of Waukegan City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 5th, 2011. Could we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Here.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
We have a quorum, thank you very much. Could we please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Also, Mayor.
Yes.
While we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, I just wanted to add to a moment of silence for Commissioner Cunningham. She's in the, having surgery, bypass surgery. So, if we can now have a moment of silence for her as well.
Sure. If we could please keep her in our minds and hearts as we go through this moment of silence, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera. I had not heard that was she stricken ill today?
Today.
She went in for, according to Alderman Cunningham, that's why he's not here. She went in for a physical and then, you know, they found the blockage, so.
Well, I'm glad they caught it.
That's a good thing, yeah.
Yeah, that's the most important thing. Well, on my comments today, obviously, I think what you all can guess what I'm going to focus on. The City of Waukegan has had pretty good beating up the last few weeks, haven't we? But you know something? We got through it. We got through it together. Everybody got out in the streets and helped their neighbors. They helped our police, they helped our fire. It was quite an event. Now, I wasn't here for the first one, but I was here for the second one. And I was standing out by Glenflora Country Club when this supposed non-twister touched down. And I watched it pull trees out of the ground like they were dandelions, no more than 200 feet away from where I was standing. And then looked over at the neighborhood across the street. Looked like it was, first, all smoke, but then I realized that wasn't smoke, that was a cloud of some sort on the ground. And it was over in that area that we had the city's most significant injury, which we are still hoping for the best outcome on that. Alderman May, you may have some information on that. Would you like to let us know what the status is right now?
I've been told by his spouse that he's expected to recover fully.
Good. Glad to hear that. Because I saw the car just moments after they had extricated him out of the vehicle, and it was scary. But we are very, very lucky, and for a lot of reasons. One, that only a few homes in this city were destroyed to the point where they're not going to be able to be rebuilt. And that the people in those homes escaped injury. I went into one home where the ceiling had collapsed, probably no more than 20 inches from the forehead of the woman that was sleeping in bed when the storm occurred. And she took us through her house, gave us a little tour, she was smiling, she was so bright, she was happy to be alive. Her neighbors were all crowding around, seeing what they could do to help. And it's in these types of moments that we truly find out what kind of a city we are. And I think that this showed that we are a city that cares about one another, that we will pull together. There are times we bump heads, but this was one of those times where everybody got out to see how they could help one another. Now, you know, there's a hierarchy to dealing with problems like this. And my thanks are going to kind of follow this hierarchy as we analyze what occurred. The first group of people that I want to thank are the people in our dispatch department. They handled an astounding number of calls and coordinated services across the city to people who were probably near hysterical, certainly in fear. And they kept them calm, and they kept the people apprised of when services were coming, and they made sure our fire and police got to where they needed to be. The second I would say I want to give, and I think we all should give our thanks to our Public Works Department. Those guys got out there minutes after this storm had crossed through our city and started clearing the streets. They made sure that the roads that led to our hospital were the first to be cleared so that ambulances could get there. And if anybody saw the size of those trees that were laying in Sheridan Road, and the fact that the work required to get those out of there, it was just an astounding feat. Tom, you've got a great crew, man.
Yes, we do.
Absolutely. And they're still working. They've still got several more days of work ahead of them.
Several more?
Well, several more weeks.
There you go.
But we're getting there, we're getting there. And I got to tell you, for the level of damage that I saw, to be able to travel around Waukegan and to have our Fourth of July parade uninterrupted was just astounding. So, again, great work, and we owe your guys a great debt of gratitude for what they've done. Then our police and fire, they got out there, and they made sure that people didn't run into the trees that you couldn't see in the dark. They kept an eye on those downed power lines that were sparking and looked like they might set trees on fire. And they were out all night. I know that I kind of got in at about 2:00, and those guys were still out there when I called it a night. And we owe them as great a round of applause as we gave our Public Works, and we want to thank them very much for what they've done. But then we had partners in all of this. And I got to tell you, Commonwealth Edison stepped up to the plate. I called them at approximately, I want to say 8:45, maybe close to 9:00. By the time I got down to my office, was able to find the right phone numbers to get through, and I told them, I said, "We got clobbered up here. This thing just completely smashed this city, especially the eastern part, and we need you up here now." They got the word out, and by midnight, 11:30, their trucks were rolling into town. If anybody was out and about in the 72 hours after this storm and saw the number of crews from Commonwealth Edison that were up here working, and how hard they were working, and how many of the management crew came up to Waukegan to make sure everything was being done. They worked out of Wayne Motley's office downstairs, that's where they were coordinating the effort. And I have to tell you, Commonwealth Edison not only deserves a round of our applause, but they also deserve some official recognition from the city. And I think by the next City Council Meeting, we'll have a proclamation thanking them as well as our own employees for all the work that they did. So, let's give them a round of applause, they do deserve it. And then Tom told me that, you know, I went down to the beach and I was surprised at how clean it was. And it was ready for the Fourth of July holiday, I figured, no way. But there's a group called GNS Services that came down and got our beach cleaned up on their own time, on their own dime. So we want to thank them very much for doing that, they're a great partner. And I think, I got to tell you, we're going to get tired of this, but one more small round of applause for GNS Services. You know, the Aldermen got out, they got out into their wards, they wanted to make sure that their people were safe and sound. And I made sure that we got phone calls into every one of them as soon as possible to apprise them of the level, the magnitude of what had happened. And some of you, I didn't have your phone numbers, so I didn't get you. So I apologize. But I do need to make sure I have everybody's cellphone number in the future. But I wanted to make sure they knew that we were responding, that we knew what had happened, and that we were getting people out there to make sure that the people in the City of Waukegan were safe. You know, when you think about, when you see all the trees that were down, what the odds are that no individual driving their car was hit by a falling tree or anything other than the one gentleman backing out of his driveway, we are really lucky. And we are really lucky to be sitting here and not have the roof off the city hall. Our water plant took a little bit of a beating, I will tell you that, and we're assessing that, and we'll get that, it's still operating, though, still providing, you never lost your water, did you? Nope. And so, again, Tom, thanks for all the work you guys have done, and the work you have yet to do. But I'm going to say something that I think we need to be aware of. It's happened twice, it can happen again. Things are changing, weather patterns are changing. Look at the winter storms we've had over the last few years. And we have to be prepared as a community to deal with these issues. And, you know, I have to say that later in the fall, we are planning on doing some dry run for different types of potential disasters and emergencies in the City of Waukegan. One of my scenarios that I was going to have for that actually already did happen. But we were so lucky that day after, when it was supposed to be 100 degrees, it had only hit about 85, you couldn't have been any luckier. Because while we had areas that were prepared to cool, and we had buses that were brought in by ComEd, by the way, that were going to be cooling buses, I think we still would have struggled to make sure everybody was safe. So, we got by with a little luck, and we got by with a lot of hard work. And we've got to be prepared that this might happen again. And it's something that, as a community, we may be reaching out to some of you that might be interested in being weather spotters, in seeing how we can get a system in place. Because I have to tell you, the alarm did not go off until I called in, and it had already torn up the trees in Glenflora. And I was on the phone while that was happening, and asked them to kick in the sirens. But I think that if we had a network of spotters that we could have asked to be on duty in certain weather conditions, we would have been better prepared as far as the timing of the siren is concerned. So that's something that we'll work with Dave Motley and other department heads to get out there and ask for volunteers over the next couple of weeks, and see who raises their hand and steps forward. All right, so, tonight, we have actually a fairly short agenda. We do have an executive session on pending litigation, and we'll have that after our Aldermen's comments, so that basically after the Aldermen's comments, the meeting, for all intents and purposes, will be finished. Because after executive session, we come back in, we will adjourn, and that will be it for the night. We do have, some people have signed up for audience time. First up is Mr. Jay Bitterman, 78 Nordean Drive, Waukegan. Jay?
Yes.
Please, if you'd like to speak up to the, come to the podium, please, sir.
Before I do that, you have some handouts? Here, just give it to me, and I can.
You can pass it to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Is this on? Yes. I'm going to entitle my comments, as far as, I'm going to call them, new old business. New old business. This business that I'm bringing up concerns the water meter situation in Waukegan. And I'm going to read from the notes that I gave every one of the Aldermen. Quote, "In September 2007, the City Water Department came to my house and installed a new water meter. On October 2007, I received a water bill that included a charge of $118 for the cost of my new M25 Badger water meter, and I paid for it. In October 2008, I received notification indicating that as of September 1st, 2008, there will be an increase in the water and sewage rate. Also, there was a notification that, and this was on the water bill, the city will now assume the responsibility and ownership of all water meters and will replace them at no cost to the owner. A $2 fee per billing will be, cycle will be assessed." Ladies and gentlemen, we live in America where government does not unilaterally assume ownership of something that they do not own. It appears that the city's attitude in order to avoid reimbursing the homeowners for the cost of the water meter. Since then, I have billed and paid the city, over a 10 billing cycle, an additional $20. Now I have paid the city a total of $138, that includes $20 towards future meter. After scrutinizing these facts, I contend that the city has overstepped its authority in assuming ownership of my $118 meter without paying me for it. Therefore, I expect the city to pay me $118. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bitterman.
Anybody can address that if they will.
Mr. Bitterman, we'll take a look at it, and we'll talk to staff about it, see what we can do to help you out, and make sure that you're not caught in between something that is a change in ordinance and a change in procedure and what's fair.
Well, when the city assumes ownership, I would like to know what law, ordinance, or authority they had to assume that.
Okay.
When they say assuming, does that mean that they didn't own it? I don't think.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Todd Benning, 1670 MacArthur Drive.
Good evening, City Council members and fellow citizens. I want to give a heartfelt thanks to Chief Greathouse and the Waukegan Police Department for their recent efforts to, for community policing, and those calls that were made all over the city. I think that's a great program. They tend to be very successful when citizens get involved and help solve these type of problems that are ongoing in the community. And then I would also like to extend my personal thanks to Public Works, the Waukegan Police Department, and Waukegan Fire Department on their outstanding efforts during these last storms, especially this last one. I just finished today helping out at First Baptist Church, cutting down a 50-plus-foot spruce tree up there, and I'm definitely glad I'm not a lumberjack. And it's just a point to prove how hard these people are working, and especially in heat conditions and everything, it's very physically demanding and a lot of effort. And I'll come back to a point related to all of that. Also, I'd like to thank GNS Services. I just found out that they're the ones responsible for taking care of the planners down at Genesee and Washington Street, and probably a few other locations down there on Genesee Street. Looks great. Everybody that knows me knows that I'm a big green advocate, and that includes all things plants. Getting back to the point in terms of people working together, problem solving, I think that's the lesson learned from some of these recent events, that when people come together and you prioritize tasks, you set goals, it doesn't take 1,000 people to get something accomplished. It can take a few people. But you have to organize, you have to understand what the problem is, how to go about solving it, and then basically involving people, including the citizens, stepping up and getting involved, and great things can happen. And we just witnessed some of those great things. And that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jamie Omira, 1318 Chestnut.
I just wanted to echo the thanks that the mayor issued. While my neighborhood, per se, was not directly impacted by the storms, many around me were, especially on the northeast side. And not only do I want to thank the amazing Public Works Department, but our city employees, and also the residents who, on their own, stepped up and took ownership of our city. One of my neighbors, he is here in the audience, and he was out driving around in his pickup truck and offering help to whomever he could. He put out a call on Facebook. A number of past residents came back to town and helped their former neighbors, and I just find that amazing, and it reminded me of why I live in Waukegan.
Thank you, Jamie. Next, Diane Verratti, 2597 Club Home Lane.
I too just need to say a word of gratitude to our community. When something happens, has happened this past week, it's good to know that we live in Waukegan. I just have to say that, knowing that we're going to be taken care of and that we're going to pull together. So, I agree with all that has been said and add my thanks to those that have been verbalized. I'm here tonight as a representative of Walkman, Waukegan Residence for a City Manager. As most of you have heard over the last couple of months, we are a grassroots organization, and I like what Todd says, we've identified the situation, we are mobilizing people in our community, and we are all about educating ourselves first, and then the rest of you, as well as people who are our neighbors and friends in Waukegan, about what it would mean to move to the structure of a city manager form of government. We've given you, every time we're here, we've given you just a synopsis of what we're learning, and I'm hoping that you will keep these in your folder somewhere and build on the knowledge that you have as we learn more. Just to highlight the information that we're giving you this evening, the goal of this Walkman movement is to set into place a structure that will aid our City Council in maximizing their ability to serve our community in the most efficient and effective way possible. A few points about what a city manager actually would do and would be. A city manager is a highly trained individual with wide-ranging expertise. Majority of city managers have advanced degree, a master's degree, in either public administration, business, or public policy. City managers have the opportunity to continually build excellence in their field with professional organizations that provide training, education, and the latest resources. Professional city managers are bound not only by state statute, but also by a strict code of ethics set forth by the International City County Management Association, ICMA. And they have a great website, you can go on there and join and get all kinds of information about this form of government. And then finally, it's important to note that the role of the city manager is to administer and oversee the efficient fulfillment of the goals and direction set forth by the City Council and community in a nonpartisan manner. So, we're available, our information, our contact information is on this sheet, we invite questions, we are hoping to be able to meet one-on-one with the rest of our Aldermen at some future point. Again, our goal is educating ourselves first, we don't have all the answers yet, but we're on your side, and we hope that you'll accept our efforts. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fred Barstow, 800 Clayton Street, Waukegan.
Position against Waukegan gambling. I write and speak today against sending a note to the Governor of Illinois saying that we want a casino. There's only one good reason to have a casino, or any legalized gambling in Waukegan, fear of those who represent the powerful gambling combine, which includes support industries, some of which are too delicate to discuss or write about in your dignified presence. Two days ago, we paraded in Waukegan. For the first time ever, I participated, helping to carry a message of bravery, not mine, but others who have gone before us all. Do we honor our brave by encouraging games of chance, where the winners take all? Do we honor our gods or our atheistic beliefs by praying for games of little chance? Yes, atheists pray in their own way. Together, we pray for an evolved people, more pure and more wholesome than we. We pray for those stumbling and falling and getting up again. We pray to leave our grandiose selves behind. We pray for the abandoned as we once were. I pray that you will use your power and votes to keep Waukegan free of corporate gambling. I pray, as a small person with what little power I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Violet Ricker, 203 West Water Street.
Good evening, my name is Violet Ricker, and I do now live at 203 West Water Street, which is a new address for me. I live in the apartment buildings at the southwest corner of Genesee and Water Street. I called Alderman Cunningham to congratulate him on having me as a resident in his ward now. So, I also just have a list of thank yous tonight to tell everybody why I love where I live. Over the past weekend, I had a really great time at the Independence Day Parade and at the fireworks, and I want to thank everybody, both Main Street volunteers and just friends of mine who helped us pass out flyers for events that are happening downtown, for the Wine and Art Stroll that we have coming up on July 30th, and for the next art walks that we have in August and September. Like Todd, I want to thank GNS Services and the Public Works Department for getting the flowers donated for our Genesee Street planters. We were able to work out a setup where the downtown business owners are going to be watering those flowers. So I would encourage anybody, if you see some flowers looking dry out there, just let me know, and we'll make sure we get a business to water them, or I'll walk down myself and get some water out of the community garden and keep those looking nice. Finally, on behalf of the downtown business owners, I want everybody to know that as Scoop the Loop is not being continued in the past couple of years, the downtown business owners, restaurant and bar owners have organized themselves to offer what they're calling Scoop Unplugged. So anybody is still welcome this Saturday, July 9th, to come down and scoop the cars like we did in the old days. And people are welcome to come to the restaurants and bars that will have entertainment all afternoon and evening, and particularly indoor entertainment beginning at 9:00 PM. So we have flyers available in a lot of the downtown shops, if you'd like to pick up some information on that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Violet. That concludes our audience time. Now we will take a motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2011, regular meeting, executive session, and minutes of special council meeting on June 27th, 2011. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conken. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Next up, we have resolutions and proclamations. Mr. Clerk.
I'll defer to Corporation Counsel. I was informed this past week that there had been a desire on the part of the council to actually adopt a resolution to support the content of casino gambling in light of the decision made by the Governor. I thought it best to have the council articulate to me, and of course, to the public, what exactly they would like that resolution to say. And then we would draft such a resolution and submit it. But I was uncertain as to what exactly we should say, so I wanted to sit back and listen to the council this evening and then draft the appropriate resolution after the meeting.
Okay, so, you know what might be helpful? We've kind of had the verbal discussion, would everybody agree on that? Would everybody agree on that?
I haven't.
Yes, Alderman, please.
Our clerk recorded every word that was discussed.
Yes.
I'm quite sure you have a copy of this, Corporation Council.
I don't have it, but I will have it.
Could you read that and just get, you know, whatever comments that we made and put it in writing?
Of course I can. I just, if there was any particular emphasis that the council wished to make, I understand the gist of the comments, the economic development issue. I was a little unclear, are we going to be supporting the casino in Park City? Are we going to be supporting a casino in our area? I didn't quite know the freezing that the council would prefer, and thus I wanted to wait and be told what the resolution should contain.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counselor, I have some concerns on how the developer came about by being named. It seems strange to me. One time, I remember when they're going for licenses, when they're going for licenses, that they had different gambling organizations bid on the project. I don't recall hearing any bids being taken yet in this license supposedly for Park City. If they're going to give a gambling license, some organization, there ought to be some type of bid, open bid process where it takes Florida. And I haven't seen that, and this bothers me quite a bit. The other problem with, bothers me, and I did speak in favor because I said I ran once and the voters wanted it, and who am I to put my moral judgment on? But a city like Park City with a small population with little problems concerned to a large city like Waukegan, one of the largest in the state, which probably could use the additional and not get it, at this point, I would just assume it's canceled. I really would. If we can't get it, then the heck, Park City shouldn't get it. That's not, it's not the right place for it. The place we had put aside was the right place for it, but it didn't happen. So it didn't happen. And sometimes things happen for the best. So I have concerns as far as saying, "Go ahead," clap my hands, because we may get a little spinoff of it, but I don't know if we'll get that much. The mayor said he made a commitment, he's keeping his word. And I have to believe when somebody gives their word, they give their word. That's where we are. So that's my concerns about it. But I wonder, how did that license, how did Ludwig get the license? Now, I know, I know according to the Sun-Times, he came up with a $7,700 donation to Senator Link. And I know Senator Link's wife got five $1,000 donations to run against an alderman who you're looking at, Larry Tenpaz. It's documented in the court records. Five $1,000, and don't do any good. She spent $11,000, I spent $600, but that's me, you know? So I just wondered what the mechanics were to get the license, and this bothers me a little bit. I think the governor should look into it.
Thank you, Alderman. Do we have any other comments at this time regarding this? All right, we'll work on a cut and paste. Oh, yes, Alderman Newsom, please.
I wasn't here at the meeting. And I, in the past, have voted no for the casino. I have listened to my constituents, those that have voiced their concern are in favor of a casino. But my concern is that I believe that it would hurt the other businesses in our area because when people go to the casino, if they come out with any money, they're not going to use it in the downtown Waukegan area or anyplace else in the area. They are going to spend their money inside the casinos. So our restaurants are not going to benefit from it. We may get a few people that are employed, maybe in some of the smaller jobs is cleaning up or whatever. They're not going to be the dealers. They're not going to be the other higher jobs that they have there. So that's my concern. We may get some of the tax dollars stifened off, you know, to us that may help in a little way, but I think casinos, they're in business to make money. They're not going to give you more than what they take in. They're going to make sure they make the biggest profit. So thinking that it's going to help the economy in Waukegan as far as the other businesses we have here, I think it's going to hurt. That's my concern. Thank you.
Alderman, if I might, Alderman Tempest and Alderman Newsom, would you mind terribly putting your thoughts down on paper so that we can, especially you, Alderman Newsom, but I think, Alderman Tempest, your additions today need to be added to what was taken down in...
Can you get off the table?
Yeah, can you take it? Yeah, thank you.
So we'll do that, then. We'll make sure that your thoughts go with the packet, which, as I stated at the last meeting, given that the fact that there was a clear majority of the aldermen that were supporting this, I am, as mayor, not going to interject my already-known stand on this issue. It's very, I've made myself very clear about this, and that the governor needed to hear what your thoughts were, and that's why we had that last meeting. So we will make sure that what you said will be included verbatim in that packet and then sent to his staff so that they can read it and then relay, you know, basically how they do, they just kind of filter it down a little bit and relay your thoughts and concerns as the other discussions of support were in the last meeting to the governor. And that's what I had promised to do, and that's what we will do.
Just so I'm clear, I was under the impression that there is going to be consideration of an actual resolution in support that was going to be submitted to the governor along with the other documentation. We had left it at the last meeting, that there'd be a cover letter indicating general counsel's support for this, and also the verbatim comments. My understanding now is that we're going to return to that position, that we will send the cover letter and the comments as they were made by the respective aldermen, and there won't be an official resolution passed. Is my understanding correct?
Well, what we can do is, I think that this can be done in two steps. One, I think under, for the sake of timeliness, we need to get the letters and the cover letter down to the governor's office sometime, you know, by the end of this week, we need to send this out. I think that the resolution, I truly believe, should be an act of a vote of the city council. So what we can do is, between now and the next city council, is prepare the resolution, allow our aldermen to review, possibly amend, comment on, and then we will have a vote on that resolution at the next city council meeting. Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's important that we realize when Waukegan went through this casino fiasco, should I say, once before, we went through this once before, but we had some guidelines set up that Waukegan would share a certain amount with North Chicago, a certain amount with Zion, a certain amount of the other surrounding communities in regard to any windfall that may come from it. I have not heard of any such agreements before. I never heard of anybody going out for bid for this license. I'm concerned. Does that mean Park City gets it all? And as my, Alderman to my right here stated, you know, the jobs you get, and you go to the casino, they got the food, they got everything right there. You drive in, park, and they capture you, you're captured there. The spinoff, maybe gas, not much spinoff. But Waukegan would be caught up with the traffic patterns into our city. Most of the logistics taken care of it, but it would be in Park City. And I'm not so sure the location of Park City in the marshland is the best location for it either. So that's my concern, Your Honor. It's not helping Waukegan. I can't see how it's helping our city.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Your Honor, for having me speak.
Has anybody seen the casino legislation? Have we? Corporation Council?
I have not.
I think it's important that we try to get the copy of the legislation, read it, and then maybe we'll have a better understanding of it.
Well, I think...
This is my opinion.
And I understand, and actually, I don't know what Senate bill number it is. We can find that out real quick tomorrow, and we'll send that to you guys so that you can each, just go online and you'll be able to download it based on whether it's Senate Bill 7412 or whatever it might end up being, and that way you can look at it. It was my understanding that there is a revenue sharing mechanism spelled out in it, although I haven't seen it specifically, at about 4% for the surrounding communities. But again, and again, I don't need to restate my stand on this, but I will say this, it's kind of like a piece of intellectual property. The city of Waukegan spent a great deal of money generating this intellectual property, and getting it to the point where it was able to be dropped right into the lap of Park City. If there's going to be a casino that comes here, while I don't think this is a good thing for government to do, everybody knows how I feel about it, that if anyone is going to get it in the end, that it should be those that have invested the most to get it to this point. So that is something that, again, I think the point is well-made in our other discussions as to the support levels for it. And again, we will get you that Senate bill number. Everybody up here will have it before the end of the day tomorrow so that you can review it at leisure and, you know, just see how you feel about it at that point. But it is sitting in the, it is no longer actually sitting in the governor's office. It has, what I've been advised, gone back to Senator Cullerton. It is under a parliamentary procedure known as a motion to reconsider, which means it can be amended, once it's put back on the committee table. So we'll see where it ends up. There's a lot of back and forth in this, and I think there's a long ways to go. From what I was told, it could be well over a year before this bill actually comes before the governor again for some final consideration. So there is time, but we want to make sure anything we do say is reflective of the majority, I think, but also the voice of the minority is important, that it is, that those letters are included, that they do oppose the casino for the reasons that they've stated this evening. So, all right, so we don't have the resolution proclamation. We will have that in two weeks, and it can be voted on at that time, up or down, and then forwarded to the governor's office.
Hold it over.
Yes, Alderman Tempest, would you hold it over, please, the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay, second, we have a motion and a second to hold over. I'm just going to voice what? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. It will be held over, and we'll be back ready for consideration in two weeks. Okay, committee reports and motions. Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
The Judiciary Committee met on June 27th. First item, A, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve, oh, no, to draft limited-area groundwater ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as potable water supplied in a designated area. We're referring to the southeast corner of Sunset and Lewis Avenues.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Newsom, I apologize, to draft, have Corporation Council draft a limited-area groundwater ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply in a designated area. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B, the Judiciary Committee recommends to have Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving the conditional use permit to Atwell LLC and Z&amp;L Machining for 150-foot cellular tower at 3150 Central Avenue with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to draft an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 23433150, central, I'm sorry, 2343 at 3150 Central Avenue, telecommunications conditional use permit for a 150-foot cellular tower. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item C, Judiciary Committee recommends to draft an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2346 at 3119 North Lewis Avenue, conditional use permit for a pawn shop. This is for easy pawn with the conditions outlined by staff. I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to draft an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2346, 3119 North Lewis Avenue, CUP for pawn shop. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item D, the Judiciary Committee recommends to draft an ordinance for the text amendment to City Code, Chapter 14, Article 11, Section 6. This is to approve the ordinance as presented, limiting the number, the total number of pawnbroker's licenses issued and outstanding to four licenses. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to draft an ordinance for the text amendment to City Code, Chapter 14, Article 11, Section 6, as described, to limit pawnbrokers to the current, to four, I believe you said?
Correct.
To four. That would be citywide. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Our last item, E, is Judiciary Committee recommends that we adopt an amended resolution of the city renaming and amending the City of Waukegan Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to adopt an amended, adopt and amend, I'm sorry, you know, I need a...
Rename and amend.
Adopt and amend.
Adopt and amended a resolution, so adopt and...
Adopted resolution.
Okay. Adopt an amended resolution of the city renaming and amending the City of Waukegan Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
And the new name should be in there.
Yeah, could we, do we have a little bit of...
The new name is the Waukegan Community Stabilization Fund, and that's just to, because the name is the same as a federal program that we also utilize. So in order to differentiate, we want to change the name to the Waukegan Community Stabilization Fund. And there were some minor changes made to this ordinance, as well as we added some language that was recommended by some of the aldermen at the last meeting. I think everyone, I don't know if everyone got the amended resolution.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to adopt the amended resolution of the city renaming the City of Waukegan Neighborhood Stabilization Program as previously described. This will take a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Great program. I vote aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman May. Next up is Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Our first item, we had a problem with our overnight parking, and our alternate parking times did not match, and so we wanted to make them coincide, make it easier for the police and everyone else to understand the parking ordinance. So the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect the alternate parking be in effect between the hours of 12:01 a.m. and 6:00 a.m.
We have the motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Beedling, to amend our parking ordinance to reflect that the alternate night parking be in effect between hours of 12:01 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera. Aye, and just one question, as far as getting it out to the public, what are we doing so they know, other than, you know, this meeting here?
Well, hopefully, the, do we have our press tonight?
We did.
We did. But we can certainly do things like make sure it's in the newspaper, there is things that could be sent out with a water bill. I mean, we'll explore whichever way we think will be most effective. And of course, something like this, we're not going to begin enforcing this tomorrow morning. We need some rollout time and adaptation time to make sure people in neighborhoods have, and also correction and signage. This has to be done before we can enforce. So we've had a little bit of a discussion with the Director of Public Works, who's headed back, he's headed home to catch some much-deserved Z's right now, but we have had this discussion, so there is going to be a timeframe. We cannot do this until the signs are posted.
I just wanted the public to...
Absolutely, but we will make sure that we have time to implement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, we want to approve a measure that the City of Waukegan can collect monetary awards for services it provides and renders at accident sites. These are typically things that we would collect from an insurance company. There's no cost to the city itself. These are things that most people pay for, but that rarely, especially in a city standpoint, they get collected. So on that note, the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to approve and propose the ordinance for a program to char... city officials be authorized to approve and proposed ordinance for a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the fire department for services provided and rendered for the City of Waukegan.
We have the motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. That concludes Public Safety?
No, I have a couple of information items.
Sorry, Alderman.
It's okay. The Waukegan Fire Department received a grant for $1,229,990 through the SAFER Fund from FEMA. SAFER is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. And also, the Waukegan Police Department received a drug forfeiture check in the amount of $7,334.95. That concludes Public Safety. Thank you.
Great. And I would like to also report, too, that when in, at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Baltimore, the issue of the cops grants came up. It was a big discussion in regards to that, relative to flexibility. So, that if a city were to take the grant and then find itself in further financial difficulty towards the end of the grant, when you're required to assume all the costs and everything like that for the additional officers, they are willing to be much more flexible on this. And I have two contact points in the Justice Department that we will be touching base with, so that we make sure that when we do reapply for this grant, which we are going to do, that it is done appropriately and with their input, so that we all understand what the ramifications are if we are awarded the grant. But they did indicate that they are absolutely, and this comes from the top down, have been instructed to be flexible and work with communities that have financial difficulty. So, hopefully, we'll be able to work our way through this situation. Okay, next up, we would have, do we have any old business before us? I don't believe we do. No, no old business. We have reports in communications? Nothing? Under New Business and Recommended Actions by Corporation Council, Item A. Take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to approve the payroll dated June 29th, 2011, in the amount of $1,257,441.92. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item B, which is a motion again by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Bedling, to approve bills dated July 5th, 2011, in the amount of $945,681.32. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item B, which is a motion again by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Bedling, to approve bills dated July 5th, 2011, in the amount of $945,681.32. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item B, which is a motion again by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Bedling, to approve bills dated July 5th, 2011, in the amount of $945,681.32. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Ordinances and resolutions, we have none before us. Now, we go to Alderman's time. And as I said before, following Alderman's time, we will go into executive session. Should be a short one, but when we come back out, we will adjourn for the evening.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First, I'd like to also echo the mayor's comments. I think that our public works people, our safety personnel, fire and police did an outstanding job during the storms. I think the neighbors pulled together, and I think we got through it. And it's going to be a little while, so I know there's a lot of tree branches, and so does Public Works. Everybody knows there's a lot of tree branches, everything laying on the streets, and make sure you get them out to the curbs. It'll take a little while, but they'll eventually get picked up. From my talk to Tom Haggerty, he says probably going to take a couple of weeks, but we will get through it. So, just make sure that all the branches and things are out there for the city to pick up, and they'll get them. I attended the fireworks last night. Outstanding. I'd like to send a thank you to our anonymous donor. It was very much appreciated by me, I'm sure, the council, the city itself, for being able to provide that fireworks display. And there were a lot of people down there, and it sounded pretty much like everybody enjoyed it. So, very happy that we have a corporate donor that saw a fit and was able to provide it. And thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Alderman Bedling.
I'd also like to thank the Public Works Department. I was issued a radio from our chief of police, a police radio, and I was riding around my ward the last couple of evenings. And I have to tip my cap to our night shift in the police department. They work extremely hard. The radio is constant, call here, call there. They're very responsive when there's a problem. I ran across some fireworks and some louder music, and for the most part, people were polite. I asked them to turn it down and reminded them that they're breaking the law with the loud music and the fireworks. My power was out, the zone I was in, for about 26 hours. And a subcontractor of Commonwealth Edison Gaffney's PMI, they came out and they did a very good job. They worked hard at it. There's still an issue with telephone lines, because our telephone was out also. And I assume, after contacting AT&amp;T today, that they'll be out Thursday afternoon at the latest. That's what I was told on the phone. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I was notified by a constituent regarding papers. I guess it's a form of the advertiser, but it's not the advertiser. It is sale papers. And they're bound up in the little yellow plastic that you would send your newspaper in. So, I don't know if our attorneys need to look into that regarding the, just throwing them in your yard, like the advertiser. I know we had a system going where we could call and get on do not deliver list or something. So, I have the papers. I can bring them in and show you what they are. But, and they're being delivered every week. They're sending out these sale papers. So, they're a nuisance to some people. So, if we could find out who's delivering those. And then I have a question for Corporation Council. I was approached by a resident of the 5th Ward, and he has a group of friends that want to get together with the city and help clean up a lot of this brush. I don't know if there's some legal issues with that, but they want to volunteer to help clean up the city, as far as removing a lot of the brush from the curbs. So, I don't know who would be a contact person. I did give them Russ's number, but I don't know if I need to have them contact someone else, or whatever, or if there's any legal issues with that.
It's something we probably should take a look at. I think it's a wonderful gesture. We do have a volunteer contract, a general contract we use to protect both the city and the person who's volunteering, so.
So, should I give him your number?
We'd be more than happy to speak with the person.
Okay, okay. I'll give him your number tomorrow. And Alderman Conken did touch on about the brush being picked up. I know last week, before we got this last storm, they were just getting into the 5th Ward to clean up the day before we got the second storm. So, I just wanted to say to the residents of the 5th Ward, to be a little patient, that we will get to all the brush that's on the curb. And you're not alone. It's throughout the city, and it will be taken care of. Kudos to the Public Works Department, the Police Department, Fire Department. I was out after the mayor called me in my ward that night, assessing some things. The 5th Ward wasn't hit too bad. The first storm, the street over from me, Pacific, one of the residents did, one of their big trees in their yard was just uplifted from the roof, I mean, from the root. So, but the second storm didn't do too much damage in the 5th Ward. So, we were blessed that it wasn't any worse than it was. There was no loss of life. I thank God that there was no loss of life. And for the injury that was in the 7th Ward, I just pray that his recovery is speedily. That's all I have.
Alderman Tempest.
Well, the 6th Ward probably got hit the hardest, all along the lake. And of course, Ms. May's-
I'll argue with you there.
-area, too. Along, along the lake there, it seems, that got hit the hardest. I wasn't home at the time. I was driving from Kenosha, but I could see the storm circling. So, I said, "Uh-oh." When I came into Waukegan, it looked like a war zone it hit. In all my years that I've been here, my many, many years, I have never seen a storm damaged as bad, which occurred the other day. As far as power getting back on, some of my people were without power for four days. Four days, and they were putting in new poles. On North County Street, I believe, they were without power for four days. I saw a development of cooperation among neighbors. I saw extension cords running from one place to another place. I saw a person with a power generator. Okay, I'll run you for four hours, then you get four hours to kind of keep things. Crib Food Store took a major hit on their goods that they had there. North Ab Tap took a major hit on the food they had. That's sad. That's really sad. But you know, the block parties, which we okay tonight, that's a good message to get people together, to get to know their neighbors better, and reach out to each other. And once they get them established, like on Gillette, it seems to continue then year after year. And I know over on 1300 Block of Chestnut, we've had block parties there. It's a good get-together for everybody in the neighborhood. It really helps a lot. And Keith, I want to thank Keith. He was out in the ward helping all over, too. And he saw me, says, "You're everywhere, too." I said, "Yep." So, we do what we can do, but we can't do everything. And, you know, as I look for it, how well are you prepared for a major catastrophe? How well are you really prepared? Almost need a chainsaw if you've got trees. You almost need a cell generator, really. You might need a little pump, pump your basement off if it floods. Just little things that you kind of wonder, "Do I have enough food to take care of myself?" Well, I always have that. I'm a depression baby. We always have food stacked up in the basement. But you should plan a little bit ahead, what you're going to do in an emergency, and get to know your neighbors a little better. Fireworks, again, want to thank everybody that kind of brings the community together. Something that they need, somebody had an idea, maybe when the water bill, we could put in, donate a dollar toward the fireworks, if you're lucky. Or donate a dollar to my, our animal shelter. I hear we have a 401 program there now, which would be wonderful. So, but the City of Waukegan did come together, and they did work hard. And my heart goes out for those that did lose a lot of food and lost things in it. But we got the power back and running again, and we seem to have got through it. And the city did pull together, and Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, all the agencies, they pulled together. And the hat goes off. It makes us a stronger community. And our hats off to Waukegan people. Thank you.
Alderman May.
Like everyone else, I want to thank Public Works, Fire, Police, ComEd. You guys were awesome. I don't think, I don't think Chief Young slept for a couple of days. I saw you out there very early in the morning and very late at night. It was awesome. I feel, my heart goes out to my ward. We got hit really hard. Buckley Hills took a beating. That's where the gentleman was injured. Circle Court, we lost, we had three homes that had limbs in their living rooms, in their bedrooms. People east of Sheridan Road took it really, really hard. I know we had a lot of other residents that were without power for many, many hours. But all in all, you know, everyone survived, and that's, that's the good thing. So, my heart goes out to my ward. It was, we really took it tough. I did want to comment. I was out between the hours of 10:00 and midnight on the night of the storm, and I was in the downtown area for a brief moment. And there was a downtown person who considers that her neighborhood. And I witnessed her sweeping glass off of Washington Street. And then I saw her sweeping glass in front of the Sterns Building. And then the next day, I'm driving down the street, and I see the same person cleaning up the park of the Waukesha Stars. And that person's our Violet Ricker, who has left the building. But Violet, you're a great neighbor, so kudos to you. Just a real quick comment. I did also want to extend my thanks to GNS Services for their assistance at the beach and for donating the flowers and the downtown planters. I did want to mention that Larson's Florist was the donor last year for the flowers. I'm not sure that they got the recognition last year. I'm sorry? No, it's down at the lake. I'm talking about the downtown planters. My final comment is, I'm very excited about the Neighborhood Policing Initiative from Chief Greathouse. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from the neighbors. I do send out an email to my residents on a regular basis, and I got a lot of great response. We're really excited about working with Officer Graybert. So, thank you very much for starting that program. That's all I have.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir. We were very fortunate in the 8th Ward. We didn't get hit too bad with either storm. But a quick point, I received one phone call after the first storm, two phone calls after the second storm, to give my, to give compliments to the Public Works Department, which they've already been conveyed to Tom Haggerty and those people specifically. My point being that if you do have compliments, rather than complaints all the time, contact us up here at the dais, or contact the director, whether it be the chief, or the Public Works Director, or the fire chief, and tell them, "Hey, thanks, guys. Thank you for your job." It makes a big difference to hear a good compliment every once in a while, than a negative feedback all the time. Director, or the fire chief, and tell them, "Hey, thanks, guys. Thank you for a job." It makes a big difference to hear a good compliment every once in a while than a negative feedback all the time. Quickly, I did get one phone call on the community policing. The individual was happy we came back to it, so thank you on that, too.
Alderman Rivera.
Well, first of all, I want to thank, thank you, Mayor, for the call that night of the storm. Appreciate it. It was very genuine, and I appreciate that very much. The 9th Ward, you know, we didn't get hit that hard, but we did get, you know, a lot of brush and, but not comparing to the rest of the city. I mean, we really got hit hard in the rest of the city. But I appreciate the calls. I did get some calls. Majority of them were from the elderly with some issues that they had, you know, ComEd, trees falling on their lines, and they were pretty scared. And so, I really want to thank not only Chief Young for your quick response on, on a couple of them, for the wellness checks. I appreciate that very much. But I also want to thank Dave Marion as well. Dave, thanks a lot. You really, you know, took care of it right away. And these ladies were pretty scared. Matter of fact, unfortunately, she was taken to the hospital a couple hours later, you know, but appreciate for all the help you did on that. I want to thank the Police Department as well. And I also want to thank Chief Greathouse for his leadership on, on a neighborhood police officer and designated to all of our areas. I think that's a great idea. So, I really appreciate that very much. I want to thank also Public Works for the job that they're doing, and from what I understand, all the trees, the mulch, they're bringing it over to the mulch company over there that we approved a couple of months ago. So, that is, you know, I'm glad that that's working there. And, but I really want to thank also, I did mention the Police Department, Public Works. And I, I want to also thank the Police Department and Public Works and David Motley for the, and the mayor and all the aldermen that went to the dedication of Chief John Delavelli the other day. It was a wonderful day, very proud moment for the Delavelli family. It was well-attended, and I know that Mr. Delavelli was very happy about that, and so was I. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work that you've done for that, David. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Now, I will take a motion to go into executive session on pending litigation. We'll take the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Conken. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We'll be going to executive session. It'll be a very short one. But for all intents and purposes, the meeting is concluded for this evening. Thank you all for coming. And thank you for those that you made, those of you that made comments. We appreciate what you said. Well, let's see where it goes. Yeah, it'd be great. Just get out, you don't need any lawsuits. It's a good thing. Well, we got one, two, three, four. I need one more. All right, we have a motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Beedling. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.